Wonderful to see such a big turnout tonight. It's a very special evening for seven special staff members. We'll be getting to that very shortly. Now, I'll call the meeting to order and Mr. Tebas will be with the local.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Dr. Colina?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Modrick?
Here.
Mr. Rell?
Here.
Mr. Novy? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Mama?
Here.
Mr. Kang?
Here.
And Zinkow?
Here.
More progress.
Thank you, Mr. Tebas. Please rise to the platform. Please give the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. Tebas, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Log Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Board of Education is now officially in charge of the public of the national conference of education, of the state of the public, of the community, of the district, and of the county. And of course, it is a position of the act of our country's important education and purpose of the union. It is a duty of the public to push the building or model public school, the model public classroom, the model county court of education, the building, the model public school, and as I've described, the area.
Thank you. Um, well, here are our high school representatives' reports.
Good evening. Um, for information about sports, on January 29th, the winter track team traveled to New York City for the Metropolitan Invitational. Several of the athletes came in first, including sophomore Leah West in the girls' high jump, Alex Rogers in the boys' shot put, and Booker McLean in the long jump. The high school bowling team became the section two group three state champions by placing first in the state sectional championships with a total of 3,294 points. The team will compete at the League of Champions on February 21st. On Monday, February 24th, the boys varsity ice hockey team advanced to the next round of the state cup with a 4-1 win over Wall High School. Their second state game versus Chatham is this Friday. At the District Two Wrestling Tournament on Saturday, February 22nd, junior Anthony Fano finished in second place and senior Ethan Fox was this year's District Two Heavyweight Champion. They compete at the Region One Tournament at Wallkill Valley High School tomorrow.
So, on the club front, at the Harvard Tournament a few weeks ago, Forensics placed very well, junior Noah Warren Blasch placed fourth in O-O and senior Danielle Zan in quarter blind in the same category. In addition, senior Christine O qualified for the National Forensics League National Conference at the U.N. Congress. Also, key clubs 33rd Animal Wildlife and Arid Rock was held on Friday, February 21st. There were 85 teams which took the four world players to part in overall ways $3,256. Proceeds will go to the project building. And on the school front, on February 8th, the MTHS Percussion Envelope formed its first competition of the season, coming in first place with a score of 70. In the beginning, the group was moved into the four A division, which is the highest and most competitive category for concert ensembles of three fewer stands. Senior Jessica Messina and junior Christian Rowe and the video production teacher, Mrs. Parrish, created a script for a television public service announcement for the Office of the Attorney General, raising awareness to the theme, "Prom's Now Call, Go Next." Their TSA tie for the second runner-up. Juniors Paige Hamel and Noah Warren Blasch, whom senior Claire Kim, who was selected to compete in the oral presentation at the Junior Science and Humanities Symposium, late March of Rutgers. These three students wrote and submitted papers on their topics to Rutgers and were split out of a full family of 100 other papers.
And for the future, the Student Activity Council will be holding their third annual Student vs. Staff Basketball Game this Friday, February 28th. Over 20 students are participating on the student team. Proceeds will go to each individual class one.
Thank you. Send our congratulations to all the participants.
Will do.
Very nice, thank you. Any colleges yet?
Waiting.
Waiting? No, um, early decisions from either one of you? Well, good luck to you. Who's forward to hearing the good news? Um, we're now at the section of the meeting for the superintendent's report and, um, what I, what I think we should do, since we have a wonderful night of presentations for our teachers, is just move up the presentations and then, uh, Dr. Freed will introduce his remarks about the calendars, snow days, and budget presentation after we do our teachers. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Dr. Freed for the presentation of our seven Teachers of the Year, including our district-wide Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to have a really large audience and it's terrific to see so many of our students here this evening, so we welcome you. Uh, this evening, we have a very, very special, um, event, and that is the recognition and congratulations to our seven Teachers of the Year, and as Karen said, to our district's wide Teacher of the Year. And each year, we, um, we have a ceremony in their honor after a committee comprised of teachers, administrators, and, uh, board members, uh, choose, um, from among our seven Teachers of the Year and determine our district-wide Teacher of the Year. And the recognition, you're in our buildings, are wonderful. I have the opportunity to visit, um, all of our Teachers of the Year in their buildings. It's terrific to watch everything from our youngest children be so excited that their elementary teacher has won the award, uh, to some of our Teachers of the Year are surprised in their classrooms, finding out for the first time by their principals, I myself, if we walk through the door, um, and grabs the applause from our middle school and high school students as well. So, we congratulate all of you. And to assist us in the presentations, we'll be asking our principals, uh, to come up to the podium right here in front and to introduce and to say some words about the Teacher of the Year, representing all of the wonderful teachers, uh, from within their schools. So, the first, um, recognition that we're going to have this evening, uh, is from Cedar Hill School, and I'll be asking, uh, Dr. Raj, the, uh, Dr. Raj, the principal of Cedar Hill, to please step forward and to introduce, uh, his Teacher of the Year and to say a few words.
All right, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce, uh, Trudy DeBolt, Cedar Hill's Teacher of the Year. Trudy's career in education started over 10 years ago when she started working at Cedar Hill as a kindergarten aide, and that day she worked for one event. During that time, as a kindergarten, Trudy went back to school to earn her bachelor's degree in education, as well as her master's degree in concentration and special education. She has taught several grades at Cedar Hill School because we have a leveling there, so Trudy has been transferring, uh, grade to grade, which demonstrates her flexibility and her commitment to her students. Four short years after she was hired as a teacher at Cedar Hill, I stand here before you, the Board of Education and model community, introducing her as our Teacher of the Year. To have your colleagues present you with the honorary, such a short amount of time, is a true testament of Trudy's natural talent as a teacher, her hard work, her dedication to her students, as well as the entire community. Please welcome me, joining and welcoming, uh, Cedar Hill's Teacher of the Year, Trudy DeBolt.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Freed and the Board of Education for inviting us here tonight. I'd also like to thank Dr. Raj and the teachers and the HS, uh, the Home and School Association of Cedar Hill for their continuous support and guidance. Uh, because of my unique situation of moving up the grade level, uh, and every year I've had the opportunity to work with many different teachers, and I've learned so much from each of them. They're among the most giving, hardworking people that I have. It's such a blessing to be part of a community where, uh, an atmosphere of caring and respect is evident for each other, and most importantly, um, towards the students. In addition, I'm very grateful for my good friend and mentor, Kathy Lundquist, to advise me to continue my education and earn my teaching degree. Um, and lastly, I'd like to thank my parents, my husband, my children and relatives for their constant love and encouragement. Again, thank you for bestowing me with this honor and truly, with this award, I'm truly honored. Thank you. I know how the kids feel after coming up. Thank you. So, Trudy, this is the Deputy of our Education. Congratulations. Trudy, one more thing. They all want to shake your hand. Four. Let's shake hands.
Our next Teacher of the Year is from Hildale School, and I'd like to introduce the principal of Hildale School, Jill Sistardos, to please move forward and to introduce her Teacher of the Year and to say a few words.
Uh, Mrs. Kelly Forrest started her teaching career 12 years ago at Hildale as a great, uh, second grade teacher. Since then, she's become a part of many, um, projects and committees. She's been taking part in the Snowplaque Committee, the Pajama Drive at Hildale, and the Pen Pal Committee. She comes in every day with a smile, she instills a love of learning in all of her students, she, with her technology and her projects, and she makes learning fun every day. She also is always willing to lend a helping hand. When I started just a couple of months ago, she was always there to answer all of my questions, um, and she has been, she's always there for all of her colleagues. So, I am honored, um, and congratulations on behalf of the Hildale staff, Mrs. Kelly Forrest, Teacher of the Year. When I first began my teaching career 12 years ago at Hildale, I realized that I was a new member in a school family. Uh, my school family was encouraging, caring, loyal, respectful, and most importantly, supportive. We worked together as a team and I rely on their expertise. They deserve this award just as much as I do. I'd like to thank my family for their support and my grade level partners, Jenna O'Donnell and Rita Lanson, who make the second grade team at Hildale such a strong one. Thank you to my principal, Jill Cisneros, and the Board of Education, and Dr. Freed for this great honor. Thank you to the parents, the wonderful PTC we have at Hildale who's willing to go and bust us beyond for us, and the students who keep me laughing and on my toes every day. It's an honor to be Hildale's Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Our next Teacher of the Year is from Valley View School, and it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Pat Kennedy, Principal of Valley View, to introduce her Teacher of the Year, um, and to say a few words about her. Pat?
It is a great pleasure that I introduce Mrs. Tracy Stewart, other known as Mother of My Kids' Sons, Patrick Evan and Matthew. Um, they come to school every once in a while, they should have, um, I can't believe how tall Patrick is, my last daughter. Um, Tracy is duly certified as a mentor teacher who teaches basic skills instruction, and she's also certified as a special education teacher. Um, she has, uh, done both roles in our school and has done both roles equally well. Um, she's a tremendous college, she's flexible, the schedule of the basic skills teacher, uh, often is very, very difficult because they go into different classrooms all day long, and you have to rely on your best teachers. Teaching, reading to children can struggle, uh, in that area, and also she teaches math. Tracy has been with us since 1997. Um, I feel that she's a very strong colleague for anyone that she works with. Tracy told the story of her father, who was her inspiration and who is here with us tonight. Uh, Mr. Stewart was a physical education teacher in Parsipon, and, um, Tracy, a young girl, was inspired by her father who, uh, wherever he went, students would come up to him and recognize him and thank him for what he had done for them, and Tracy felt that she wanted to follow in her father's footsteps. So, when she earned this honor, uh, Teacher of the Year, he said to her, "Well, Tracy, from one Teacher of the Year to another." So, she truly, uh, followed in her father's footsteps. Um, I just want to share with you two comments that her children shared with me about, um, their teacher. I like Mrs. Stewart because she is the most wonderful teacher and thinks she should deserve Teacher of the Year every single year. She's helpful and remindful, I love that word. She reminds us that we need whatever we need, and, and she's there to help us whenever we need help. She gives us extra work, and that's just what we deserve. So, Tracy, thank you for being one of the staff at Valley View, treasure your presence. Thank you.
As Dr. Kennedy said, I have always known that I wanted to be a teacher because I did see firsthand the impact a teacher could have on a child's life. My father was a physical education teacher and head football coach at Persia Hills for over 30 years. It didn't matter where we went on family vacations or what activity we were doing, people always recognized my dad and felt compelled to approach him. I watched us say thanks to my dad and told him that he was the reason they became teachers and/or coaches. Even then, I knew that being a teacher was an important job. Now that I have been teaching for many years, I am also aware that teaching is a challenging job that one cannot do alone. It is so important for teachers to rely on one another, to support one another, and collaborate with one another. And so, I want to thank all the classroom teachers who welcomed me into their rooms each and every day as we work together to support our struggling learners. I especially want to thank Carmela Barbera, my instructional partner for over 12 years. She is smart, supportive, and fun, and I could not for a better partner to collaborate with and to rely on. I'd also like to thank Dr. Kennedy and Dr. Jill Fry, our meeting speculators. Under the guidance and support of these two women, Mrs. Barbera and I have been able to create a strong basic skills program that we are all proud of. Finally, I would like to thank my family, my mom, my dad, and my sister for all their love and support, my husband Lake and our three sons, Patrick, Matthew, and Evan. They laugh at my funny stories from school, and they encourage me when I'm losing sleep over children other than my own. I am so happy and proud to be a teacher at Valley View, and I'm honored to be Valley View's Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
We would now like to, um, honor and congratulate the Teacher of the Year from William Mason School, and to do that, I'll introduce the principal, Mr. David Lutowski, who will introduce his Teacher of the Year.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I want to thank Dr. Raj once again for, uh, explaining something that's better to have my back to 200 strangers than my, my bosses, so my apologies to everyone behind me. I will address the board. William Mason's Teacher of the Year is Miss Williams. She is a fifth grade teacher. When I first came into the district, she was in second grade, and, um, last year in June, we had to do some, uh, some changing around, some, some grades were being dropped, and some grades were being added, exceptions, I should say, a certain grade loss. Needless to say, um, teachers are creatures of habit, and there weren't too many volunteers to, uh, step up to the plate and say, "Uh, Dave, I will gladly take this fifth grade position," or fourth grade, or, et cetera. So, um, one day after school, it was probably around four o'clock, and Miss Williams walks in, and she said, "Uh, you know what? Dave, I think, um, I think I welcome the change. I'd like to do it." So, before she even, um, finished her sentence, I said, "You're hired, you got it." So, uh, needless to say, it's been a successful year because this is her first year in fifth grade, and she was named Teacher of the Year. So, uh, I'm proud, I'm grateful, and I'm thankful to work with her, and I'll always remember her willingness to step up and be a team player, so to speak. Um, and, uh, one of the other things that I, I mentioned several weeks back when we were recognizing our Teacher of the Year at, uh, Dr. Freed's meeting over at Central Office, was, um, not only does she possess all the characteristics of a, of a highly effective teacher, kind, caring, empathetic, knowledgeable, dedicated, um, she has a, uh, a unique and uncanny ability to seek and find quality leadership in her principal. Because Miss Williams also served on the committee to hire me three years ago. So, um, every year, I, I guess it's okay to say it now, um, when it comes time to schedule preps and duties and who doesn't want to be outside at 7:55 in the morning when it's minus 10, um, she always has the best schedule in the building. You know, I guess, like I said, it's okay to reveal that now. She's been such a hard worker, uh, a bonus to our school, a blessing to our school and to our parents and our students, most importantly, and, um, I'd like to recognize and thank her again tonight for, for all of her dedication to our school. So, Miss Williams, congratulations.
I'll start by saying that, um, when Mr. Lutowski asked me if I moved to fifth grade, I was a little frightened because they are taller than I am. He told me that I'd be okay. Um, there are so many dedicated, wonderful teachers at William Mason, and it's quite an honor to be named William Mason Teacher of the Year. None of us gets to be good at what we do without help. I really am where I am today due to the collaboration and invaluable support from my colleagues. I also want to thank the administration, the parents, and our generous home and school for all they do to help with the programming and benefit us with teachers. To my husband, John, and my family, I can't thank you enough for your love, support, and encouragement, especially this year, as they've been sent countless hours learning the curriculum and planning new lessons. Many of us know that my children have been begging to apply, and they're put off as, um, "I have to do the lessons." I'm grateful for all that they do to help you make us a successful teacher. I'm truly honored to work in the district, um, with such support, and I'm honored to be, um, Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Our next Teacher of the Year comes from Woodmont School. We want to congratulate that individual, and to do so, I'll be calling on Mr. Dominic Esposito, the principal at Woodmont School.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Tina Jannas as Woodmont's Teacher of the Year. What better impact can we have to demonstrate Tina's impact in our building than when you look out in the assembly here, so many of Woodmont's teachers, parents, and students have come out tonight and to recognize and honor Tina? I think of no better tribute to this wonderful educator. Tina is a teacher's teacher. As a new principal, over the summer, I'm sitting in my office, working through the paperwork, trying to understand the lay of the land, if you will, and teachers come into your office and they want to get to know the principal, and you start to engage in conversations. And there was one recurring theme in many of these conversations, waiting till you see Tina Jannas, and they were right. Tina is the epitome of what it means to be a teacher. She is the paragon of professionalism. We are very fortunate to have her. She works collaboratively with all the stakeholders at Woodmont. She works well with us in administration, with her own colleagues, with her parents, all for the benefits of the children in our school. As co-advisor of the student council, she helps our students find their voice, and she guides them in using those voices to engage effectively and respectfully. As a member of our Sunshine Club, she works very hard with her colleagues to keep up staff around her, and it's true, she brings a lot of sunshine into Woodmont every single day. So, it's my pleasure, it's my honor, to introduce Tina Jannas, Woodmont's Teacher of the Year.
Good evening. Um, thank you to the board for recognizing. I'm just going to say it's so much easier to stand and sing off key in front of 20 fourth graders than standing here right now, so, um, but thank you, the board, for recognizing us, and thanking all of the teachers of the year. Um, I began teaching in Rochester, New York, and continue my career, um, coming to Woodmont 10 years ago, the central anniversary gift, um, to be the Woodmont Teacher of the Year. And ever since I set foot at Woodmont, they've considered my family, um, sometimes spending more time with them than my own, um, and they've always welcomed me, and our families at Woodmont, the staff and the teachers at Woodmont, um, make every day worthwhile. I love that our Woodmont family supports one another, we strive to work with the best for one another, and all of the kids of our students, and, um, I'm lucky to have this opportunity to do my career in such a wonderful way with Woodmont and Montrose Delta. Again, I am only one of many teachers who have been here today, um, representing Woodmont, and I am blessed every day to work with such professionals and amazing team of teachers. And thank you for supporting me and encouraging me all these years. Um, to our families at Woodmont, who do so much to support our teachers, um, thank you for your generosity, the grace of time and encouragement. And most importantly, to our students who give me some joy, um, great memories, and remind us what their teaching life is all about. And of course, my own Jannas family, my husband here tonight, my three boys who should be sleeping now, um, who allow me the time and energy to have this great life, um, at the age. So, thank you, everyone, and I truly am honored to be a Woodmont teacher of the Year.
We're now moving ahead to our middle school, and we congratulate, uh, our Lazar Middle School Teacher of the Year, and to do that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Sharon Carr, the principal of Lazar Middle School.
Good evening. It is a wonderful, wonderful night for teachers. Congratulations to all of our teachers, and to my Nancy. And we practice not crying. We are known as the priors at Lazar, we practice not crying. Um, no crying. Um, eight years ago, eight years ago, I was, uh, lucky enough to be on an interview committee, and a new graduate came in to interview for an English Language Arts position, and it was Nancy, having, uh, left a career enriching many lives in the corporate world in New York City. She left to volunteer and found out that she could enrich lives in elementary school, and it never dawned on her that you can get paid for that, and there was a very wise teacher who told Nancy that you can get paid for doing this. So, lo and behold, Nancy comes to Lazar for this interview. We are all sitting around the table, and I can even tell you she was wearing a navy suit that day with a white blouse and a little bow. I can remember her vividly. She interviewed magnificently, she told her story how she ended up at Lazar that day, and when she left, five of us sat around the table and said, "There's something about her." her. I'm not sure we knew what it was, but there was something about her. Um, I was always the one who was left to run out the parking lot in Deppen before they leave so we could sign them up and bring them back. And Nancy came to us because there was something about her. Fast forward, seven years later, Nancy is still enriching lives of students with all of the wonderful things she... Can you hear her heart pounding, I bet? She is still enriching all the lives of children in her classrooms with creative projects. Uh, she's a team player, she is collaborative. Uh, there are just so many incredible things and I know we have to keep these short and I, it's just almost impossible. They do have to share two things, that the children were all giving the all the favorite things they did about Nancy and it was as long as my arm. Um, I had a very, very, very important comment that a parent made and she said, this teacher gives life lessons to her students. And she particularly did with my two. And for that, I'm forever grateful. Uh, I received an email from a gentleman who's in high school now and he said, truly, I want to say thank you because my high school career would be very different if I could not have your presence. So, um, so Nancy, thank you. Thank you, your wonderful family for, for letting us have you eight, ten hours a day. And, and thank you for that something about you. Still just don't go. It's difficult to make a speech looking around at, well, so many of my students here, especially, but I'd like to thank Dr. Freed, Mrs. Carr, Mrs. Lee, Mr. Fasselli, the PBC who's so generous to Lazar, um, my family is sitting in the back, my daughters, um, my colleagues, especially Mrs. Harrison, Mrs. Fredo, for this tremendous honor. Um, to be selected as Lazar's Teacher of the Year, it was wonderful. Um, and I know that, and just going on from here is going to be exceptional. Um, my route to teaching was not the ordinary one, it wasn't standard. As a younger person, teaching was not even on my radar. Um, as a team, most people didn't ask me to babysit. Um, my first career choice was real estate and that was probably good. And there were some really good things that happened in real estate, but at the end of the day, it felt like just a job. When circumstances changed and the teaching came into view and my path changed, I could never predict the joy and passion and happiness that I can be teaching every day. So, I'd not only like to thank the administration and everyone on the board, but I also want to thank my students, uh, many who are here tonight and their parents who share their wonderful children with me. Um, since there's never a day that goes by that their children's not making me laugh or smile or in some way giving me some joy. It's an honor to have been their teacher, it's an honor to have represented Lazar as Teacher of the Year, and I thank you very much for this honor.
As everyone knows, we had to change the date of the board meeting to this evening. The Teacher of the Year recognition was supposed to be earlier in the year or last week probably, so that feels like a few years ago. Um, but nevertheless, unfortunately, our high school Teacher of the Year cannot be here this evening. But nevertheless, we do want to recognize, congratulate, and honor him. And to do so, I'd like to introduce Dr. Sanford, the Principal of Monmouth Township High School, uh, to congratulate the High School Teacher of the Year.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to all the other teachers of the year from all the other schools. Um, once again, I do apologize to the audience for having my back to you. Um, as Dr. Freed mentioned, um, our Teacher of the Year is Mr. Joe DiGiacomo, one of our guidance counselors at the high school. Say a few words about that. First of all, I want to point out that at the high school, we embrace the philosophy that, um, we celebrate the Educator of the Year, um, not just the Teacher of the Year, which is why, uh, Mrs. DiGiacomo, as a guidance counselor, was chosen. Um, he cannot be here tonight. He teaches graduate level education courses at William Patterson, which is one of the ways in which he gives back to the educational profession. Mr. DiGiacomo began as a guidance counselor at Monmouth Township High School in September of two thousand and four. Personally, I truly appreciate his start in education before coming to the high school. Um, he was a classroom teacher, a social studies teacher at a private school, um, similarly beginning to what I have. Um, that, that idea of a classroom teacher and then becoming a guidance counselor, that's a quality or, or a career path that's becoming increasingly rare, but, but very much valued because of that connection that the counselor has to the classroom experience. In addition to counseling students from all high school grade levels, Joe is the coordinator for the high school and liaison for our Morris County VOTEC program. As such, he addresses the needs for all the students as they relate to the technical training program available at VOTEC School. Many students throughout the community have let the school know of their appreciation and admiration for DiGiacomo. One parent recently wrote, humble and kind, Mr. DiGiacomo probably does not realize his importance or value. We see it and thank him. Before I go on to say a few more comments, I guess I want to sort of gauge and I'm going to do something, I'm going to go out on a limb and hopefully this doesn't backfire, but if, if everyone's listening to me, the students who are in the audience, if I show a hands, how many of you have either had Mr. DiGiacomo as your counselor or maybe have had a personal conversation? You can raise your hand and, and keep it up just for a second. Parents, if your child has Mr. DiGiacomo as a counselor, you can raise your hand too. Or if maybe you've had a conversation with him in passing for some reason. The educators in the room, if you could, if you've had a conversation or interaction with Mr. DiGiacomo, whether you're an administrator or a teacher, you can raise your hand too. So, if everyone just kind of glanced around for a second, I guess you can now let it soak in the impact that Mr. DiGiacomo has had on this school community. It really has touched the lives of so many youngsters. Um, he's also touched the lives of so many of his colleagues. One of his fellow guidance counselors, I spoke to, um, that person today, uh, they shared with me some thoughts. Mr. DiGiacomo has taught many valuable, far-reaching lessons in his office as a guidance counselor. As a colleague, Joe has exceptional counseling skills with circumstances that range from diffusing potentially volatile situations to building a rapport with a reserved individual. He's often the person who's behind the scenes and helping students improve their learning elsewhere, yet his contributions often go unnoticed. He works to organize and improve their study skills, even if it means physically organizing a student's locker with him or her or tutoring a student. Mr. DiGiacomo does whatever it takes to help empower his students. Entire families have benefited by Mr. DiGiacomo's interactions. He proudly displays family photos of his students and often jokes that he's earned a spot in many of those pictures. Whether in a one-on-one conversation or presenting to a large audience, parents appreciate his knowledge and advice. Mr. DiGiacomo's expertise in the field is also evident as he teaches sociology and education classes at a local university. Yet it's his exemplary interpersonal skills that make him stand out. He's an asset to the entire high school community. One other quote I took from, from a teacher in the building, because so often Joe interacts with teachers, "On top of all these wonderful traits, Joe is an authentic, authentically positive and loving person. He exudes kindness and goodwill in every direction, his playful spirit and sense of humor is infectious. And his love for his work is obvious in all he does. He's the embodiment of what it means to be an educator." The high school is very proud to recognize Joe DiGiacomo as our Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. At this time, I have the honor of introducing, actually, I asked Dr. Corrula to do that, um, our District Teacher of the Year, selected by a committee from among our seven wonderful, exceptional, excellent educators. Dr. Corrula, would you like to do the announcement?
Sure. Um, I think it's the district's very distinct honor and pleasure to announce that the two thousand and fourteen District-wide Teacher of the Year is Nancy Gossick.
Um, can I say one other word? Uh, this is, gosh, this is absolutely unbelievable. To be named Lazar Teacher of the Year was unbelievable, but now again, to represent the district of Monmouth is even more than that. Um, I'd like to just congratulate and it's a great honor to be with all of these who are in here today. I think they will all truly deserve even the support, some even more so than me, I believe. Um, and I would go and chew, go on to the next level, hopefully, while I'm in class. So, thanks very much. So, appreciate it.
Before we move along in the agenda, um, I've had a request from the media that all seven Teachers of the Year could gather, uh, for a photo opportunity. So, if all seven Teachers of the Year could gather for a photo opportunity, it can come up right here. I'm gone. Yes, thank you, Charlie. Um, I'm going to call a five-minute recess.
So, good evening again. Before I begin the next segment of the meeting, I want to acknowledge that almost all of our administrative staff is here this evening to both honor our teachers and also to be involved, uh, as we discussed a budget later on. Um, the next part of our meeting tonight, um, will be a conversation about, um, snow days, attendance policies, and perhaps a little bit about the calendar. Um, and I'll try to make this just as, um, congratulatory and as festive as the first part. So, just some information. Uh, over the last couple of weeks, I've received, um, a bunch of emails from parents, from students. I have deaf with students, I've been on the phone with parents. Um, and, uh, at this point in time, we have used a total of eight snow days. In our present year's calendar, we have four, um, makeup days embedded into the calendar. And at the bottom of the calendar, which was created about two years ago, we have a formula for additional makeup days, which actually, the first one was called for, um, January twentieth, our Professional Development Day, but we passed that date before we had used our four snow days, so that day stayed as Professional Development Day. The next one, uh, came after we had used our four days. So, that was, uh, makeup day, that was President's Day, so we went to school on President's Day, uh, using one of our makeup days. And now, three more are necessary as the calendar falls for those to be in the order of April fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. The calendar, by the way, is developed by a committee. On the committee, uh, our administrators, parents, uh, members of the clergy are invited to attend and are all in presence. Um, we share the calendar with our Teacher Association representatives, uh, and then that calendar has to be approved by the Board of Education and this community, the Board likes to approve calendars approximately two years in advance. Um, we face particular requirements from the State Education Department, including making sure our students are in attendance a hundred and eighty days in a year. We have contractual requirements with our Monmouth Township Education Association to meet. Our teachers can teach up to a hundred and eighty-two days. Um, we have Professional Development Days embedded into our calendar. Um, and of course, um, there are other kinds of things about our calendar which causes us to, um, look at it in particular ways. For example, uh, we have to choose a graduation date because in the community of Monmouth Township, we have an activity called Project Graduation, which occurs on the evening right after a graduation, which gives our students, our high school seniors, they have to graduate a safe and constructive place to be. I've attended that event many times, wonderful. Uh, and booking the venue for Project Graduation literally has to be done an entire year in advance. And of course, the graduation date once set is, um, is fairly engraved with stone because people can make very long-range plans for that particular day. Um, so, right now, would you be in school April fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth? There have been, um, comments and, and suggestions about perhaps, instead of holding school April fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, using Saturdays, um, or extending the school year? So, let me start with the extending the school year suggestion. Again, with Project Graduation already set, with graduation day already set, uh, that is not a recommendation that I would make under New Jersey education law. We could not hold days beyond the date of graduation. We would have to move graduation in order to have days at the end of the school year. Um, Saturdays as an alternative, um, is also not a suggestion that I would, in fact, recommend to the Board. And when I say recommend to the Board, the Board has the opportunity to change the calendar, they're the only ones who have the opportunity to do so, but it wouldn't be my recommendation. I think that moving the days to Saturday would create another whole set of, of problems. We have a set of problems in front of us and I'll readdress some of those in a moment. I think that if we moved it to Saturdays, that will fix the problems that were in front of us, but create another set of problems, having to do with everything from attendance of students because of other obligations, staffing because of teacher obligations outside the district. So, that would not again be my recommendation. Um, the issue of Passover, uh, the first evening of Passover being Monday night of fourteenth, the first two days of fifteenth and sixteenth, has come up from, uh, parents concerned about those, that, that, um, holiday falling within the makeup days. Um, when we create makeup days, I guess in our wildest dreams, we don't actually think we'll be using them. So, uh, everyone, I think, has the best intentions and of course, we have a limited number of days. We can, uh, in fact, uh, create makeup days, but here we are with that, uh, situation. So, after thinking through that situation in particular, uh, here's what I have to offer. First of all, of course, because it's religious holidays for some individuals, they would be excused absences. Uh, during those, during that entire week, particularly around those two days, but with that entire week, there will be no tests given, there will be no homework given. Um, and any assignments that are going to be given, that might start before that week's holiday and we do upon return, because we do in fact have those three days of, of, of students who, even though at school, we may have students away or students home because of religious holidays, we would make sure that those assignments are due three days later than they have been the teacher's original expectation. So, that students would return to school the week after and have some time to complete those long-term assignments. So, again, excused absences, no tests, no homework, and moving the expectation for assignments due three days later. My expectation right now is that they would be full days of school, not half-days. If that were to change, any or all of them, I would let the community know and of course, of course, the Board of Education recommends to them that we make that change in enough time that our parents could make childcare arrangements. Uh, but right now, I see them as full days of school. Uh, and we would expect that learning, teaching and learning would go on. Um, our students would be again expected, of course, to speak to their teachers, uh, be responsible for the information, but again, no tests and no homework. Our seniors face a particular problem. My guess is most of our high school students here tonight might be seniors. Uh, they face a particular problem because in the fourth quarter, not the entire year or semester, but just the fourth quarter, the last ten weeks, they take a health class. The way our attendance policy works is you could have no more than fourteen absences for a year-long course, seven absences for a semester-long course. year-long course, seven absences for a semester-long course, that's two quarters, or in a one-quarter course like this health course, only no more than three absences. Students who might be going away with their families during that vacation week already would be facing potentially three absences if they have no excused absence. And then we have the issue of college visits. We have some students who are still taking college visits, who look at colleges and make decisions. And for some of our students, once they make a decision, they may have an orientation. All of our students, we would expect, and whose parents would expect, if you know a college, high school senior right now, once they're accepted to the school, they would attend the orientation. Sometimes it's a parent orientation that's attached to that as well, and that's a very good thing to do. Some schools do it just before you start, May, August, or September. Some schools do it during the summer. Some schools might, particularly in the South, when schools end earlier around that area, they might even do it in June. So we understand that we have those challenges. So right now, the policy about college visits says that we can have up to three that are excused, others beyond that would be unexcused. So my recommendation around all of this, you heard it with regard to the connection to the Passover holiday, but my recommendation around the board policies connected both with three days that are already in the policy about college visits, and the only three days that are allowed to be absent for the health class, otherwise theoretically you lose credit, is to allow me, the discretion of working with our high school administration, to look at each student's case individually and provide, I'll call it leniency if you will, around the issues of college visit days, college orientation days, and planned vacations over the spring break for families. I think that we want to be respectful about those important events. We certainly don't want to congratulate the student for going to a name school, doesn't matter, Boston College, and by the way, you can't graduate from our high school. That wouldn't look good for us, would it? So nevertheless, we certainly don't want to put our students in that situation, and we don't want our students and families to be overly stressed out, I imagine many have been. So what I would ask, again, the Board of Education to do, without naming a number in particular, although I have some numbers in my head if we need to use them, but to allow me the discretion with regard to those two policies, again, the college visitation number and the health class miss number, to work with our high school administration. I've had countless discussions with Mr. Sanford, he with his administration, they are included on board with this. I will say, since Mr. Sanford has gotten here, no student has ever not graduated because of missing a health class. But there's one caveat that I will, that I will throw out, and that is this. We know, I know, if you don't know, I'll tell you, that in our community at times, our students who attend prom, which is a Thursday evening, they're not in school on Friday. I understand, I get it, I have a 17-year-old son who's a junior, I have a daughter who's a freshman in college, I get it. They don't attend school on Friday, but they also don't come back on Monday. That part is hard for me to get, particularly when I'm talking to about Project Graduation, which keeps our kids safe after our graduation. So while we will extend all sorts of leniency, if you will, to students when they take their college visits, when they go on their college orientation, for our students who are using days beyond what the policy calls for, meaning that they're out there, missing days of health class because they're making college visits, that they're out there with their families on their spring break, they're out there making college visits and orientation and those things, if they don't come back to school on that Monday, the leniency part is gone. So I want the authority, so to speak, at that point, to be able to then not grant that leniency, and in fact, those unexcused absences will potentially cause students to not get credit for that health class and therefore not graduate. We could be looking at situations where students are missing far more than three absences from health class to make their visits and orientation and their spring break trip, far more than three college visits, which right now is in the policy. So again, you have to report for that discretion, but the expectation is that students come back to school on Monday. The last thing that we're thinking about, and I would have more information if we're going to try to do this, I must be involved in cooperation from a variety of sources, if we have students who go beyond a certain number, I don't know what that number is right now, but it would be a particular number, through all of their time missing legitimately through their visits and so on, because we could have, again, two emails, I'm aware of this, some families that really are hoping to be doing a lot of college visits legitimately, but in fact, like this, a lot of health classes, we may try to provide some makeup classes. And we would expect the students, that would be done at some reasonable times, could in fact make up some of those classes and show good things that way. That's something, though, that I would need to work out with the Monmouth Township Education Association, if a teacher can be willing to do that, of course, despite then, would be provided for that teacher who might be willing to teach those makeup classes, if you will. So I would now like to ask the board if there's anything I can clarify, or if they have any questions, and then Dr. Corleone, a lot of people want to extend the conversation into the audience before we go to the comments.
Any questions for Dr. Freed from the district?
Dr. Freed, I think that once again, you have a situation which could be a difficult situation with very thoughtfulness and thorough consideration. Having been a parent of two students who have graduated from this district already and one that's currently in high school, the concept of the health education class has always been a consideration for seniors vis-à-vis college visits. And your thoughtfulness with respect to the allowance for students for the April break, I think, gives them the leeway to be able to go away. I also think the just even thought process of a potential to make up classes, I know that you didn't say that that would happen, but just the thought process shows your completeness. And I don't think that you could offer anything for it. I appreciate this as a recommendation.
Yeah, when I saw this on the agenda, I was very curious to hear what the superintendent was going to say. I was very happy, I am very happy to support everything that you've suggested tonight. I know some of the mechanics have to be worked out with, maybe the makeup classes. But I want to support it because it gives the youngsters, especially those seniors with the health class, they're not being penalized. They'll be able to go to their college visits. Having four youngsters go through the college visit process, it's very demanding, and you set up schedules, and it's sometimes when you cancel them, it's difficult getting another schedule. But I think we've taken a bad situation. I never remember this many snow days in one year. And I think this way, we're giving those people an opportunity to get to the colleges, we're not penalizing any of the children who need it, and I would definitely support it, and then look for you to come up with the mechanics that get any information out to the parents, et cetera, et cetera. I'd also like the idea of coming in after the prom, because, you know, you're given, now they have a responsibility to follow through too, and I think that's part of the problem we have. So I definitely support it, and I thank you for coming up with those ideas.
Not to be redundant, but I agree with both of my colleagues here. There were some items in the presentation that I had not expected, and I agree with Dr. Kane and Mr. Graut, so much thought has gone into this, and it has the flexibility along with meeting the standards, which are so important to us. So I'm very supportive of the things that you've said tonight, and very pleased with the things that you said tonight.
Okay, so I'm going to leave with one last.
One more to put comments before. I would be remiss not to point out that while I have had, as I mentioned, several emails from parents and clinical conversations as well, it was my meeting, actually, with a group of students that brought this, I guess, clarity, so to speak, forward. So I want to tell them, I think some of them are in the audience, that I did appreciate that meeting, as they always appreciate meeting with students around different issues.
I take my comments back then, and I'll give it to the students.
Does anyone on the board object to what Dr. Freed has put forward? I'm gonna open it up to the audience now, for an opportunity for you to hear your comments and thoughts on what has been offered by Dr. Freed and what the board will support. Just come up to Mike, say your name, and we're ready to listen.
Hi, my name is Susan Hanoff, and I live at Long Kirk Bright Harris, Tuau, New Jersey. And I would like to thank Dr. Freed for considering we had a lengthy conversation. My daughter and all her friends were extremely stressed out. These are students who are honest students who have perfect attendance, and while I realize I'm the former superintendent of Project Attendance, so I know the points of the attendance policy. I appreciate it, I have a three-page speech, but he addressed all of the items that we, he responded immediately to my email, and then we had a lengthy phone conversation where I was able to express all of my concerns, and I'm glad that you are, you know, going to address all of these. My only question is, what in the meantime, as we, you know, my daughter's starting her first accepted students' visit, and we did have a discussion about the difference between a general information visit, which these students did last year, where you just go on a tour of the school, and the programs that they're attending this year, which is an accepted students program, which, again, where they meet with an advisor, they visit the schools of their major, and these are in-depth presentations for one to two days. We're traveling all over the United States, we're going to Texas and Orleans, we're leaving for Tallahassee this week. In the meantime, do you recommend that we just keep a file of everything that we're doing, or how kind of want to handle that?
So I'll be sending out something to our parents throughout the district once the board, once this concludes and whatever the board is able to accept. But I know that we will require documentation, of course, for college visits, for orientation, so whatever, whether it's the administration's office there, or whatever office you're at to bring back some proof, so to speak, that you made that visit, that's what we would require.
I'll review all the bills that were--
So that would be required, I don't think, Mrs. Sanford, that's what you'd require, correct? So to-- So to return that to us.
All right, thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else on this topic, calendars, snow days?
Scott McHawton, 14 Voger Road, I too have a seat here this year, and I appreciate the suggestions that you're making for the accommodations. I guess my question is, there seems to be a loophole problem that we have, and that is health class may be at the end of the year, which is required for more than three days out. Why couldn't that last be pushed first, in my opinion, or second? And then it would alleviate, if we did have this in the past, or in the future, the concern of trying to hit the one eve, doing visits and hitting the three-day health issue.
Yeah, so it's kind of a different topic, but a topic for future consideration, of course, not for this year, but I know that's something Mr. Sanford and the high school administration are thinking about. There's been, I think, unfortunately, a bit of a history in this district that our seniors, as it gets later in the school year, perhaps don't attend school as often as we might hope, and I think the idea of this health class being placed strategically in the last quarter has helped attendance stay more even. So we're trying to think about, I know Mr. Sanford's been thinking about this a lot, trying to think about how we can achieve the goal of having our students attend school, but perhaps having that health class earlier so that, you know, in case something really unusual happens, a student happens in this many classes, they still have the time to make it up so it's a bigger quarter, and it would be, you know, such a disaster for them as it is now in the last quarter. So I think we're trying to find that balance. Thank you. I can say one last, one other thing, though, that I would like to bring forward to the board. A gentleman wants to speak perhaps, but one other thing, and that has to do with the calendar in general. I don't think it's healthy for the community, our students, the Board of Education, or me, to be going through this kind of process every year. It creates a lot of concern and anxiety, and it clearly has to do with the fact that we only have four snow days in our calendar. We might say, Graut, that this was an unusual winter, right, eight snow days. I've been in the district four years, three of the four years, we've had unusual weather. We've had, in my first year, it was perfectly fine, the second year, we had that October snowstorm at Halloween, you remember, no power for a week or so. The second year, we had a hurricane, and the third year, hurricane, and this year, eight days of snow. So this unusual weather is not so unusual anymore, and of course, snow days doesn't seem to do it, it seems to always jeopardize the spring break. So I would like to be able to bring the Board of Education our next two years' calendars, which they've already approved, but bring it back to them with the recommendation for some modifications that could better preserve spring break. Now again, it may do something to the calendars that I'm never really thrilled with, but I don't think we can have it both ways. I think there has to be some sort of modification so that we don't reach this point in time, again, unless, of course, the situation is even more unusual than it's been.
Is there anyone else on this topic only? Okay, I will close then this session of public participation for this item, and we'll move into the budget presentation. Did you want to speak, Mr. Becker, on something on the agenda, or? Yeah, we're gonna do our budget presentation, and then just a few more items, and then we'll be happy to open it up for a conference on weekend.
Okay. I'm pretty insulted to have a show, so we'll give you two minutes or so to say goodnight. So we'll give you two minutes or so to say goodnight. Hi, good evening. So we're going to now begin our first, I'll call it official budget presentation this year. A couple of weeks ago, I did a short presentation on developing the budget, some ideas connected with philosophy and vision. And tonight's reaction of today's preliminary budget. And with the agent Devis, our business administrator, who is really the heart and soul of what they're able to put together and bring forward to you in terms of initiatives and the ideas that pave our budget in the framework. So our mission statement, we always begin with that, that guides us, and we value education at the highest level. We want to guarantee exceptional education for our students by maximizing individual potential, encourage critical lifelong learning, restore partnership of educators, families and communities. And these are our student learning goals this year. We have goals in four different areas, student learning being our most important, but we also have it in communication, in the area of human resources and personnel, and in the area of business operations. So for effective teaching and through, and in order to help achieve effective teaching and professional development, looking at the common core curriculum and part testing, the impact of school culture on students. We did a report on user goals, and this year we're bringing some of those goals to life. Supporting the world language program, moving forward with the original science research program into the end of the year of learning there. The high school media center has a long-range goal in terms of facilities improvement, looking at our college-level courses and middle school scheduling. And so our vision for the future, looking at opportunities and high expectations for all, teacher effectiveness and student engagement, and I'll reemphasize that, teacher effectiveness and student engagement is at the center of our work. We want to create passionate learners, inclusive and collaborative settings, and maintaining excellence while becoming a district of distinction. And we're looking to, in fact, bring programs forward which distinguish us from other districts around us, from other wonderful districts around us, while maintaining our excellence. So our proposals under the elementary school, we'll maintain our class size, our programs, and continue with our initiatives at the middle school, high school as well, and with our athletics clubs, we have, we're maintaining our present programs and even introducing some new ones. So here are some of our proposals for the elementary school for next year. We're reducing two elementary teachers, one at Woodmont, one at Cedar Hill. These reductions will not affect class size, this has to do with the various bubbles, if you will, we have in our grade levels, in our sections. So we'll be having one less classroom teacher at Woodmont, one at Cedar Hill, but maintaining the same class size, favorable class size we have, of course, and sticking with reward policy on class size. The decreases are based on enrollment, class size is unaffected. There may be other places at our elementary school where in fact, we could be decreasing enrollment or decreasing numbers of teachers as well. Right now, I'm taking the position of leaving those in the budget because it's kind of on the line, if you will. But there are some places where it is close, so I just wanted to point that out. We're going to be having the infusion of technology into our elementary schools, I'll talk a bit more about that later, but Chromebooks and cards to support instruction in each elementary school. The cards are where the Chromebooks are stored, and it's also where they are being charged, it keeps them safe. And so we have the cards that hold thirty of these Chromebooks. And then air conditioning in our schools, as we supported that last year, four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, which again, was the same number as we had last year to continue that project. I will say that our budget gets tighter, I feel that it's back in remaining the budget forever, but for next year, it is there. Continuing, we have two, two-hour-per-day lunch recess aids to support our children at Fort Mason and Hildale. So we're providing additional lunch recess aids there. To help with summer kindergarten screening, we are asking for one teacher to work two additional days in the summer to help screen children. And also to support our elementary schools over the summer, we're asking that we have one secretary per school for three days each, and one nurse per school for one day each, again, to support our school, over the schools over the summer as they start off for the new year. That was our middle school. We have some summer needs with our guidance counselors, so we'll be adding, we have added this year already, this present year, we added additional counselors, so we have four counselors at our middle school, improving our student council ratio. So for all four of those counselors, we're adding an additional day in the summer for each counselor, one additional day. We're adding at Lazar, one additional day for each nurse, there's two nurses at Lazar, one additional day for each of our school nurses, so they can do work in preparation during the year. And giving twenty thousand dollars for living lessons for the wonderful program that is done at Lazar Middle School. I believe the program costs forty thousand. Sometimes they have to raise all of that for fundraising, the district is providing twenty thousand dollars for that program. Also at the middle school, Chromebooks and cards to support instruction in the humanities program, that was asked for by Mr. David Tugs, our supervisor of humanities, that's English and social studies, in collaboration with the middle school administration. In order to support the change of busing times that we had this year, the start time and end time for our schools, everyone, I think, remembers, maybe not so much, I can't get that part, but we did have some busing issues earlier in the year. We had to do some things that, to help with that. So we do believe we need to add on a couple of our runs, two, Jim, is it? One to two, so we have additional money embedded in the budget if necessary in order to help even out those runs and help the buses run on time. And two additional school clubs, at Lazar Middle School, one for set design, and a school At the high school, we are looking to add an additional school assistance counselor, they're sometimes called SACS, as they see, school assistance counselor. The emotional health of our students is very important to us, of course, and we believe that we can serve needs better if we have a second student assistance counselor at our middle school. We're also adding two science teachers. There are two reasons for the addition of two science teachers. One is that we are offering biology to our ninth graders for the first time. This is something I know that parents have been very interested in, it's something that we believe is very important for our students. So we will offer both biology and our science to ninth graders, they can take one course. For students who particularly love science, they can even take two if they improve their schedule. So for that alone, we will be the better part of, or have, one of the head teachers. And also as our science research program increases, and next year, our program will move into senior year, it's a three-year program, it begins with sophomores, so far we have sophomores and juniors in the program, next year we'll have sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We need additional sections for that program. So two science teachers and one world language teacher, and this is very, very good news that we need an additional world language teacher because more students are taking world language as they move through our middle school program now, which requires a grade eight into grade nine and beyond. We have one new course offering called Tomorrow's Teachers. Of course, all of us who are educators really love that idea, that course. This is a course that exists in many school districts in New Jersey, it has a prescribed curriculum, so we offer that, of course. We're going to expand the humanities research program. That program was taught by two different teachers, one in grade twelve English and grade eleven social studies. We're going to be expanding that program further. We did a presentation about that program earlier in the year, so you may have been here to see that. And we are very excited about that program as well. Students again are doing real-world learning, using Chromebooks to enhance their research, and they're excited that we have teachers who are interested in getting involved in that program. And again, as I mentioned before, the continuation of our science research program moving into its third year, the sophomore to the senior. We have four additional clubs that we're recommending for the high school, Gay Straight Alliance, Literary Magazine, History Club, and all three of our other languages already have honor societies, but Mandarin does not, so we want to add Mandarin to the Italian, French, and Spanish group, so we have a Mandarin honor society. Maintaining and running effectively the high school auditorium is a huge job that is done through some teachers, through our high school administration, and we believe that that really is important, and also through Ed Fleischman, who is he, a director and supervisor of the arts. And we think that could be given to a teacher with a stipend to help maintain and run that auditorium in terms of scheduling, in terms of the needs having light and sound. At some point in the future, it's fairly expensive, but I do think that that auditorium does need some renovation with regards to light and sound, but that's a topic for another day, not for next year, but I do think a stipend would position the auditorium manager. It's been recommended, and toward the marching band, four mellophones, and I can't wait to see what they look like, because I don't know. Oversized trumpets. Special services, our proposals are one teacher for the high school. And again, the area of special services is based on student needs and required through IEPs, so we projected one additional teacher at the high school, a .6 teacher at Lazar for Wilson reading, and that includes training and materials. We have two occupational therapists in our district, right now they work four days a week, we want to increase them to five days a week. They already receive benefits at four days a week, so it's really an additional day. The benefits already are included in their salaries at this time, so increasing from .8 to 1.0 for both of them. And the special education secretary at Lazar, increasing her from ten-month employee to twelve months. The area of technology, our technology needs are expanding incredibly rapidly due to part testing and the increase in Chromebooks, you'll see what I mean in just a moment about that. So we do want to increase our technology department by one technician to support students who feature new technology needs and the part testing. Very low cost, but an interesting item is an interactive response system that we left a pilot at Hildale School. This is a system where students can, through the use of clickers, interact with the smartboard and kind of put their answers out there to be seen. And then Chromebooks and cards, and more details are listed under capital improvements, which we'll get to in a moment. In the area of athletics, we have several proposals. We have a one golf team, which is mixed, boys and girls, and that usually is fine, but sometimes the girls have to play separately than the boys, and there's only one coach. We would like to have an assistant coach for golf so that in fact, we can supervise and allow the girls to play in those separate tournaments. In winter track and spring track, an additional assistant coach. Those sports do not have any cuts, meaning students, if they want to go out and participate, they're able to, unlike a basketball team where it's very hard to have forty children on a team. You can have as many kids out for a track team as wish to participate, but we do need more support and supervision for them. And then one replacement golf cart. There are professional developments, we have a budget for that, there are several items included, including training for Manningson Model, which is our teacher evaluation system, our school improvement panels, they're often called skip committees, school improvement panels, CIP. These are the groups within our schools, there are three members on each skip committee, they represent each building, they're prescribed by the state education department, is part in this whole movement, in the whole tenure review system, and serving on those committees are a principal, an assistant principal, or a different administrator. Cases are our elementary school, we have our supervisors serving as the second administrator, and also a teacher. And they're responsible for professional development within the buildings, on January twentieth, when we had our professional development day, those are the groups that worked with their teachers in their buildings and created that professional development day. We have a bigger group called the District Evaluation Advisory Committee, and we meet every couple of months to talk about the work of that committee and the progress that we're making with our evaluation system. And we have a board member who serves on that committee, we have a parent, Terry Becker is here, thank you Terry, serves on that committee, he's a parent representative, and we have teachers and administrators. We're also having Wilson training, as I mentioned before, it's a reading program, mostly for special education, education, training for science research. When our teachers teach an AP course, it's a new course for them, they have to have training before they're allowed to teach it, so we have some dollars in the budget for that training and money to support the teacher evaluation model. We have curriculum development, so last year we had a lot of money embedded in the budget because we had a lot of curriculum to write, having to do with the common core curriculum. This year we have very few left, but still we do have some curriculum to write, so we have a much smaller amount, but some money in the budget for our teachers to be paid, mostly over the summer to write curriculum. Okay, we're up to capital, facility and maintenance items, and Jim, would you like to lead us through this conversation? And when you get up to the technology part of the PAR, I'll come back on and say if you were certainly not prepared.
Hello, everybody. Just going to run you through some of the maintenance and the facility initiatives contained in the proposed budget for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Trying to do something for every school, one of our seven buildings, bottom elementary, one middle, one high school. Cedar Hill, we have a number of maintenance items that we're going to be working on, we're also going to be installing replacements, a number of blinds and escrow, we've been doing that for the last couple of years. At Hildale, we can continue with an ongoing cycle of replacing some classroom flooring, the uneven carpets in those classrooms and replacing the top. We're also going to do the same thing to the hallways in that building as well. And again, there's some just general maintenance items to be doing as well. The Valhalla School, we're looking at boiler replacements, with the, again, some maintenance items that need to be done, painting, again, initiative to do some of the broken blinds in a number of the classrooms and administrative offices in that building, taken care of and mostly playground. At Willie Mason, again, some maintenance items that we need to get taken care of in terms of painting and playground mulch. Over Woodmont School, we're looking to repair some window hardware that needs to be taken care of, and again, along with maintenance of our playground wall. At our middle school, we're looking at a major facility project in terms of boiler replacements, and we're looking to replace all the classroom clocks, it's been a serious hardware issue in this building for a number of years, and it's an initiative we actually plan for, we could get put into this proposed budget. At the high school, we have a number of facility items, again, this is our flagship school, if you will, it's a very big building, and there's a number of facility initiatives that we are trying to get caught up on, so this came out in the past few years. One of the biggest that we're looking at right now is the improvement of the high school playing athletic fields. This has to do with a tie-in with the Lazar playgrounds here in the back, we're looking to relocate them, so the new transmission lines for PSA and G, they're due to be energized, you know, in the coming months and time, totally before this summer, actually. When we do those fields, when we do the playing athletic fields, we're also going to be looking to do sprinkler system at the same time. That's money that we've actually budgeted for the proposed budget. The funds that we're utilizing for the actual improvements of the playing fields themselves, however, we're looking to utilize money from PSA and G that was set aside in escrow fund specifically to help us do that, to relocate these fields over from the back of Lazar Middle School over to the high school. The locker rooms that were just recently completed, major renovations to both the boys and girls locker rooms in this past summer, we're looking to now install initial with the drop ceiling, and we're looking to do phase two, if you will, of the door replacement project. Phase one was mostly locks, that we had done in past budgets, current budget, we're looking to do phase two, which is the front door doors. And we're looking for some ADA compliance projects such as access to the auditorium, we're looking to put in, kind of like an elevator lift, to give that ease of access. District-wide, we're looking to do phase two of the building air conditioning initiatives at the elementary schools, so as Dr. Free had mentioned, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's set aside for that proposed budget. We're looking to do a number of concrete, period, sidewalk repairs, you know, they're not very glamorous, but they're things we really need to do on an annual basis to keep our facilities in tip-top shape. These buildings, especially the middle school and high school, are literally used twenty-four seven, you know, around the clock throughout the year. And then we just have some general maintenance items, again, to keep the equipment to our needs, keep the maintenance and facilities in the condition that we need to. And as far as technology, Dr. Free, would you like me to turn it back over just for this particular response?
So this slide depicts, you know, the technology that we're bringing into the district, and for PAR testing alone, we need eight hundred forty Chromebooks, that's twenty-eight carts of thirty, to, in fact, test our students with the online testing that has to be done. This testing occurs two times a year, once in the spring and once at the end of the year, and the most efficient way for us to do it, most effective way for us to do it, and to in fact, to also maintain instruction in our classrooms as much as possible around that testing, is to test one level of our grades at a time. So for example, for an entire week, we'll be testing just the high school, for another week, just the middle school, and for another week, just our elementarys. Austin Thompson, who's our technology director, I never actually remember his title, Austin, but, well, we all know the great work he does, but, so he gave us numerous, numerous proposals in terms of how we might in fact be able to bring the testing forward, and the most effective way is to in fact do it the way I mentioned it, because this way, it's complicated at the high school, because when you're testing in a certain area, you may have students in that class who are from more than one grade. In a high school course, you may have tenth graders and eleventh graders in that same class, or eleventh graders and seniors. So if it's a tested class, we can't say, okay, this week we're going to test ninth graders, because that's not how the courses at the high school work. So it's better to test the entire high school at once, this way the kids are engaged in the testing, as opposed to worrying about the instructional part for them, and instruction can continue at the elementary, middle school level, and again, the same thing as we test the other schools. So these eight hundred forty Chromebooks will be moved around the district, and that's the minimum we need to test all the students at once in particular area of grade levels. They'll be moved around the district with the testing over this three-week period. The remainder of the year, and this is the very, I think, positive news, is those devices will be used constructionally throughout our school system. So all of our elementary schools will have a minimum of three carts or ninety Chromebooks each in their school the other thirty-seven weeks of the year, and maybe even more than three, at a minimum, that would be fifteen then out of the twenty-eight carts, or, you know, so they would at a minimum, and then others distributed to middle school and high school. So that's what that would look like. And then, as I mentioned before, the expansion of the humanities research program, we would also be bringing in another hundred twenty Chromebooks for that program. During the testing time, during those three weeks, we can't have instructions stop in the humanities research program, in the middle school program. So we have some that are dedicated completely to instructional programs all year, and then the additional Chromebooks divide it up, as we're not using them for three weeks for testing. So for the, for that program, we have a hundred twenty new Chromebooks coming in, which require four carts, we have thirty tablets also coming in for the humanities research program, some furniture for that program. The humanities department, as I mentioned before, three carts, ninety Chromebooks. And then, as I mentioned before, the elementary schools, a minimum of ninety per school distributed from the PAR, allocated Chromebooks and carts. And additionally, we are expanding our bandwidth, upgrading that with service and hardware, our wireless network upgrade and rewiring of Woodmont School. So lots happen in the area of technology. If you're curious, the estimate for the money being spent just on PAR testing is four hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. Unfunded mandate, among many, and this one's new, but as I said, the good news is the other thirty-seven weeks of the year, we're now infusing technology into our school system as we look forward to that. Thank you, Dr. Free.
In addition to the PAR initiative, we do have a number of facility or major capital improvements that we're looking to do in the proposed budget. Again, we're going to continue, this is going to be year two of enhanced security initiatives. We're looking at doing window tenting in selected areas, we're actually starting, I guess I would call phase one, actually, this spring. This will bring us into phase two to do the more, more schools in one area, we'd like to do. And we have a number of other, you know, confidential initiatives that we're looking at, administration. I just want to add to that, the board, whether the public realizes that or not, we have the safety and security, we have an ad hoc safety and security committee, and that's now become an actual full, full board committee that's chaired by John Rowe, the head of the local building initiatives. New capital facilities, continuing with these, we're going to be doing another deposit to withdraw from our capital reserve account, or depositing to the capital reserve account from general funds for the media center improvement project, which we've actually recently solicited proposals for in the design profession. So we're budgeting to take four hundred thousand dollars, depositing this capital reserve account specifically for this purpose. We've done six hundred thousand in the thirteen, fourteen school years, this brings us up to a million now for this initiative. In addition to the high school, it could also be used for improvements of other media centers throughout the building. For the actual financial highlights of the proposed budget, again, just a, a lot of towns and schools is coming in below, two percent local tax levy cap, one point seven five percent increase in the local tax levy to fund a bunch of initiatives that we've previously reviewed, that includes that four hundred thousand dollar deposit into the capital reserve account. We're looking at a number of outstanding infrastructure facility initiatives, and again, the tax levy increase to one point seven five. It's interesting, here's the actual expenditure budget itself will increase by about one point, will increase one point seven two percent of the general operating budget itself. This is actually a little bit less than the thirteen, fourteen expenditure budget increase was about at one point eight percent. Again, it's something I'd like to highlight on what we do in the proposed budget presentation, we do continue to utilize a number of shared services, and that ranges from bus transportation, proper school supply purchasing, we have a lot of collaboration, we do with the municipal outing in terms of the DPDW and our facilities department, for example. We recently just went into a joint agreement with township for garbage recycling services, and again, it happens to save the township money, it's all the same taxpayer dollars, so that's only a win-win for the taxpayer. State aid comparison, we didn't efficiently get our state aid figures yet, we should, depending on what happens tomorrow, obviously, as you're probably aware, the governor did give his address today, the state of the state address, he did announce that there will be an increase for us, general state aid, for education initiatives, we do not know what Monmouth's allocation may or may not be at this point, so I'm a little hesitant to say that it's definitely going to be, we just don't know that yet. But that being said, the way the proposed budget is developed, the one that you see before you with the one thing, seven five percent local tax levy increase, is assuming flat state aid, so we'll see what those numbers play out for you in the next day or so. In terms of the actual financial highlights themselves, this is, I know, kind of a busy-looking slide, but again, I want to point out, the presentation is going to be posted to the website the next day or so, we'll do that with every single budget presentation that we give, and I'm certainly welcome if the public will ask specific questions to certainly address them with me. Again, I'm just going to take a moment to just point out some of the important highlights. On the right-hand side of the fourteen fifteen proposed budget, we see the two-year comparison towards the left, the last two school years, current and one prior. You can see the trend of the tax rate increases all three of those years, below two percent local tax levy increase, and I think that speaks volumes for what this Board of Education is committed to do for the taxpayer of Monmouth. In terms of that red line that you see towards the middle, it says over, under cap, and I know it's a little hard to see, but if you're hand-ed, you might be able to make it out a little bit better. We're seeing in the twelve, fifteen school year, it says that we're under cap one point five million, hundred fifty-two thousand in the thirteen school year, and almost another hundred fifty-six thousand in the current year. What that means is, that true amount of dollars, by not going to that two percent increase in the local tax levy that we could do by statute, that's the money that we could actually increase this budget by, if the board so wanted to do, and not, and not have to get a special waiver for. But this Board of Education is very fiscally responsible and conscious that that's not really the way we want to do, although we need to rate it over the two percent cap by that amount. The only way to pay for it is, we have to, we have to increase that local tax levy. So instead of one point seven five percent, it would be significantly less. So again, it's just a, you know, responsibility, so let's be kicking in. The ratables you see are, have increased from the thirteen, fourteen school year, fourteen fifteen, the ratable base went from four million, four billion, four hundred ninety-nine million to four billion, five hundred and three. That really drives your tax rate, is that, that's the line we're using, so that's a very important number. What we're looking at with the one point seven five percent increase in the local tax levy, that really equates to, at the end of the day, is a one hundred twenty-nine, one hundred thirty dollar increase on the average home model. And that's, the average home is currently assessed at half a million something, I don't have exactly what topped my head in my budget presentation, I'll actually put it on there for us. And these are just future budget presentations that Dr. Free, I would be making. Dr. Free, you?
Thank you, Jim. So the comment I made before asking the Board of Education to return to the table is that the budget process begins with a series of meetings, having to do with our administrators, with staff members, eventually with all of our administrators in one room, where not only, of course, are their proposals and ideas written down and contained in budget books that are sent to our central office, but also through a lot of conversation about things that they're interested in, things I'd like to see for their schools, and through that process and sorting things out, we get to this point. Sometimes we have a variety of other kinds of meetings, because perhaps we've hoped for too much, sometimes we're able to accommodate certain programs and not others, but I'm very, very, feel very, very positive about this budget. I think we have reached a good point, I think we have included initiatives that are going to continue to move us forward in terms of our programs, and I feel very positive about the professional development money that's embedded in the budget, not just for the district-wide initiatives, but also for our local school, our also skip committees, our school improvement panels, to help support teacher effectiveness in our buildings, and planning professional developments in our buildings as well. So I think it includes a lot of very rich opportunities for our teachers to learn and grow, and that will translate into effective instruction and better opportunities for our children. So I want to thank our administrators for their participation and involvement in the process. I think a big part of it is being transparent, all our administrators hear each other, and it turns out to be, I think, a pretty equitable process that we all have to confront. So with that, I ask the board to return, and we're happy to answer questions and hear your comments at that time.
Just real quick, I just checked my backup, the average assist home value in Monmouth is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, so I'll just put that on the slide for the future review.
I want to thank Dr. Freed, and Mr. Tevis, and their staff, as well as the administration and staff throughout the district, for putting together the budget. In particular, I'd like to thank Mr. Tevis and Mr. Tevis and his staff for delivering the budget binders to the Board of Education at about midnight last week. It was above and beyond what any of us expected them to do, but they're very responsible. They order on neurotic, but we're very happy that they're in our district, providing the level of service and quality that they do. So, thank you, Jim, publicly, and thank your staff.
I was a little surprised to look out the window at midnight and see Mr. Tevis, so I dropped him off by.
Sure, it's great.
Didn't bother the police.
So, does the board have any questions or comments for either Dr. Freed or Mr. Tevis?
Just a couple of questions first. On the eighteenth of March, is that the night that they were adopting a tentative budget? Or is there going to be another meeting, and when will the public hearing be? I didn't see those dates up there, and I know that probably you're waiting for other information, but can you give us any information on that now?
Yes, I mean, the budget was going to be submitted to the county on March twentieth. I do have the public hearing date set in the budget, I'm just giving you more than I actually have in my.
It's in April? So, in other words, on the, the next week, not the March eighteenth?
Yeah, March eighteenth.
Will adopt the tentative budget at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. I also echo Karen's comments to both you and Paul and Jim for the wonderful job, and I have a question of the superintendent. The budget that you presented tonight calls for flat state aid. If flat state aid is a reality, is this the budget that you are recommending to your administration?
Yes.
Okay, so in other words, if we lose state aid, we've got to revisit or increase revenue or something, right? If we don't lose state aid, then we're okay?
Correct. If, if we lost state aid, and it was a small amount, and we still could fit what our initiative is within the two percent cap, we might come back with that concept, but otherwise, we may have to make some decisions.
Thank you. Very nice job.
Any other questions? Davis?
Talking about the capital helping fund, I notice that it's going to be going down with the concept going to be.
Use the mic, Dave, for the, sorry. Capital Outlay Fund, it's going down for the proposed year. Have you considered what it's going to do for capital improvement projects in the coming years, and is it going to meet our needs, or meet our needs?
Certainly. It's going down in relation to what we put into the capital, what we utilize as capital outlay expense for little capital facility projects in the current thirteen, fourteen year. If you were to look at those, that multi-year comparison synopsis that I handed out to the board in their particular packets, as I mentioned in previous years, this board's been very, very good. Many of them are great providers of business administration, finance committee in the board, have always been very good about trying to budget roughly about a million dollars of capital facility improvements and projects. Again, that's in an effort to make sure that all sides of the buildings are properly maintained and don't fall apart tomorrow, like you see in some of the districts. If districts don't try to do any work somewhere, all the, some of the buildings every single year, and just let it go for a couple of years here and a couple of years there, eventually it's going to catch up. And then you're looking at a major problem, and if you're not looking at needing to replace one section, two or three sections of a building, you're replacing the entire roof of three or four school buildings with old voiders, and now you're looking at, you know, a ten million dollar, potentially over that right there. So, the initiative, the data they employ here, I think, were the ones, you look back and you look at the history, I'm not sure if I can see that, they've been, the last few years, they've been doing more and more capital funding, they've overgrown enough to have a typically budgeted general fund. How is it doing that? The board's been taking some additional fund outs, we generated in the current school year, and we're doing deposits and capital reserve maintenance reserve account for the district. And building those up, you were actually able to have, what I've heard was a banner here, in certain quarters, we had well over fifteen, maybe, capital projects that we had took in the district during this past summer. So, that's why that moved so far, given the look that you're putting on a million dollars for the product as opposed to the one that we typically. So, the reason is, if you've seen it go down, is because all of that was in the preparation that typically do that. Also, as I pointed out, typically we budget a million dollars, that's fully struggling with capital and control of the building. Because the park initiative, what we did, we needed to budget money, need to buy money for that park initiative, and most of it's brought back to computers and laptops. So, I can buy those out of the capital, from projects, from capital outlay fund, and then the general fund. So, we decided to take about three hundred thousand, that million, and put it to a partnership out of the general fund, and balance it about seven hundred thousand for our routine facility maintenance. And while you're seeing two million instead of seven hundred thousand, because again, we need additional projects by utilizing controls from capital reserve and capital maintenance. And again, as you have, we have two hundred buildings, we have one way, we're looking at a giant reference.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask this, really, as a general question, and maybe if you talk about some of the way to do this budget. Just in general terms, the biggest highlight is we have our bunch of salaries.
Yes.
Getting in school.
Right.
And I'm looking at next year, we've got a 3.67 percent increase in salaries, we've got a 9.7 increase in debt. I'm just wondering, how many years can we continue to come in under cap before this catches up with us, and all of a sudden find ourselves not having the money to lose these salaries?
Falling off the level of revenue. And again, what we've been trying to do in success, is the point, is things are all pretty stable, it's kind of a power actually funding expenditure side of the budget, as that pop out of that synopsis that I presented to the board. And we do that with two areas under the local tax levy. Obviously, the local tax levy is a big piece, it constitutes a big portion of the revenue of local capital. We then use some forms of state aid, obviously, to get somewhere in the, in the, in the dollars. There will also be something called required fund balance, budgeted fund out. Required fund out is a portion of additional fund outs that we generated in prior school year that was over a two percent threshold in the state specific cap. So, it's part of that, and what we do is use, basically, what additional fund outs we may have with the school year, so that we might give an estimation calculation for whatever's in the year, and share that with the board finance committee. And it's about certain taxes, I may directly gauge it, no indication, usually in this case, this year, I suggested using about eight hundred thousand. So, I'm sorry, suggested using about eight hundred thousand, what I feel we may could utilize or make in fund balance by the end of the current thirteen, fourteen school year, and use that additional fund outs to fund the 13, 15 budget, or some of the 14, 15. I don't know if that fully answers your question, but again, this is a multi-year plan, so I'm looking at this in terms of how many, how many years go forward, can it influence the status of 15, 16, and 16, 17? Right now, confident that it can, forecasting past that.
Okay, I just don't want there to be a situation where five years down the road, we find ourselves saying, you know, there's a, obviously, we're obviously worried about taxes everywhere. It's obviously a consideration, but I just hope we're not going to be in a situation where five years down the road, we're going to be looking and saying, the money we could have all of a sudden, we can't afford to pay for, can't afford to pay the freight. I'm looking, I see expenses going up 2.31 percent. And we have two major sources of revenue, taxes and state aid. The state aid's projected as being flat, and the taxes are going to be flat. I just have concerns to, to how we're going to do this.
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback on what Mike was saying, just in terms of, I mean, I've made no secret that a two percent cap, I don't think is sustainable for a quality school district. I guess the one thing that concerned me, Jim, was in response to his question about our fund balances trending up or down or stable, and the answer was, they're trending down. So, that, that does concern me. You know, and, and every little bit that we can get to help the current future budgets, it certainly needs to be thought about.
Yeah, I'll, I have a couple of comments. I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I agree with Karen. The backdrop here, and something that hasn't been mentioned, and it's a discussion for another time, is that we have survived 9.6 million dollars of state aid cuts in this district over the past four years. This administration, I give you a lot of credit, Mr. Tevis, of what you have done to juggle all so that this, our district can continue on with the type of quality level that it has had, is pretty astounding, considering the type of cuts that we've had, despite the fact that I'm talking about increased revenues and increased state aids for various districts year after year. We got an extra dollar last year, but we did have a loss of 3.2 million, all of our state aid four years ago, and we continue to recover from that. So, it's nice to see some programs being added back, but a concern as time goes by is going to be living under the two percent cap, especially when there are, as you brilliantly alluded to before, the park testing, which is one of the mandates from the state, has nothing to do with what we are being asked, what we are asking our children to do in this district, but that's a state unfunded mandate, we're getting no money from the state in New Jersey for it, and we're spending, it's a four hundred thirty-three or some other word.
Dr. Freed had actually calculated that at almost 150,000.
Right. So, when you consider all of these mandates coming down from transit, from a man who's telling us that we have to live under two percent cap, he's almost asking us to live under two percent cap, and then charging us back that same two percent, yet we have a district to run. So, I implore you, Mr. Tevis, for running the district, as we have, and of course, you, Dr. Freed, for the intellectual and academic division. I did want to mention that I'm really happy to be sitting here in Lazar, with, with the budget adding to these living lessons program back. That is a very valuable, best educational experience any of the children in this district get, and I'm so happy to see that that's a big reward with little funding. And the Chromebooks, I just wanted to ask, Chromebooks are, it seems what a lot of districts are using now. There are iPads, there are Chromebooks, there are laptops, but Chromebooks, is this, is this a Google item? I have to really see.
Yeah, yes, it is. So, it's our understanding that, that using, having Google accounts, the students will be able to write on, you know, you don't use the same platform as the Microsoft, you know, Office, you know, you can burn and so on, they use versions of that in Google, so our students will be able to compose and write on that. Lawson's done a lot of work in working with representatives of the company to ensure that, and also to make sure that we'll be able to use it for Rosetta Stone, so that our students, because ever since this year, when we introduced the keyboarding back into the elementary school, we don't have room in our labs for the students to have two weekly experiences of Rosetta Stone this year. Having Chromebooks in our elementary school will again make that possible. So, that's one of the ways they'll be able to use while they're not being used for testing purposes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just out of curiosity, I think you indicated correctly that if, just hypothetically, if we went up the cap, it would only increase the average tax impact of the average by a hundred dollars?
Yes.
The total would about 155,000.
Right.
Yeah, just one more question about the Chromebooks. How much is it going to cost to maintain them, software, other issues, in the future?
Honestly, we'd like to go up and respond to that. Included in the price of purchase, there's maintenance fee for the management console, which helps us manage them and push applications out, things like that, but we will need to replace devices, we're hoping to get maybe four years out of them, because they have an internal battery that you can't replace, but we will need to replace them, like we do at the other place, regular schedule.
In other words, would we be looking at another hundred thousand every, every year after our four years?
Depending on how we structure that, I'm looking at Jim on that, maybe we'll sync or something like that, like we do with computers. But in the future, we might be able to shift computers around, and there's a lot of things we can try in the future as we start classes, except to try to change how we structure our computers. But there's no extra software beyond what we're already purchasing.
Before you sit down, I figured while we have them up here, in keeping with what was said before about talking about down the road, you know, the funding, just a question, I heard the $400,000 number of Chromebooks.